Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Roll call. All members of council are present with the exception of councillor Polling, who is excused. Approval of tonight's agenda.
To move?
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anything on tonight? Anyone that would like to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll close public comments and move to consent agenda. September 6, 2022 council work session minutes and September 6, 2022 council city, city council minutes.
Move to approve?
Hearing a motion by councillor President Gryson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Mosowski, any discussion? Can we just switch the words in the agenda to city council, not council city? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Old business, ordinance number 904, an ordinance renaming Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court. This will be on second reading and potential approval. Laurie Joseph, Oliver.
Thank you. Mayor and council, again, this, this ordinance 904 is on second reading. Council held a public hearing on the request September 6th and made a motion and a second for approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, before we do questions, let's go and go into second reading. Ordinance number 904, an ordinance renaming Sixth Street to Southeast Sixth Court has been moved and is on the floor. Is there any discussion or questions by the council? Seeing none? All those in favor of ordinance number 904, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, council discussed the request from CAT below for an ordinance banning the sale of puppies and kittens in the pet store. What are you looking at me for? Well, you're the one that requested it, so that's why we're looking at you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor.
I just wanted to bring that, since this was a request from the public that came in and we didn't have a chance to discuss it as a council, I just thought it was important that we have this dialogue among council to see if we want to move forward with an ordinance, a draft ordinance for consideration. I did have communication with city manager Rains regarding this and I think I heard from somewhere, I can't remember where at this point, that there was already a ban at the state level for selling puppies in pet stores. And city manager Rains, I think, looked it up and I don't want to speak for her, go ahead.
So, right, there is not a ban at the state level, which is one of the reasons why they've been searching for bans at the local municipal level. And so I did confirm that and then we also have a sample ordinance that we could work off of if this is something you all would want to pursue.
Thank you. Based on the public testimony, I am in favor of an ordinance banning the sale of puppies and kittens in pet stores. Moving, moving forward, at least with the draft ordinance for that, sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So councillor Miller, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, at least following up with the citizens' concern and that we're addressing it. I think that that's very valuable. I did do a little research on my own in regards to this because I was informed that there was a state bill that was actually moving through. And in my research, I did know that the, there was a previous House bill, I believe it was in 2020, that actually died in the chambers. So there isn't currently anything in the works, but I think that there is a coalition of folks that are still trying to make that movement to be a statewide ban. I also did have the opportunity to speak to the management team at our local pet store and they do not sell cats or dogs at this particular pet store. And so in that conversation, they did acknowledge that there is, you know, a need to ensure that those that are breeders are breeding in a way that is humane. And I think that CAT brings this to our attention because we know that there are a lot of, I would say, not acceptable practices when it comes to animal husbandry. And so their concern, at least from the pet store owner's perspective or the pet store's perspective, is that when we do put these bans, all it does is push illegal breeders into doing more illegal breeding. And so I'm not against nor for this ordinance. I would be willing to absolutely hear it out and seeing how it'd be drafted. But I do want to at least acknowledge the voice of the business owners and how they feel about these particular ordinances. So I would just like to share that with council as we move forward and whatever direction it may be, is that we're very mindful of how it can impact not only the animals, but also our businesses and our residents. So I appreciate the time.
I have a question. So I did, and so I did do some research and, you know, there's terrible stories about puppy mills and awful, how they don't come very healthy, they're not taken care of and how puppies or they're not, way that they package them or the way that they, they're, they held them, they're not getting the love and affection that they needed in, in the beginning, like any, any kind of infant, right? So in these ordinances that we have a possible template, is there, for example, a clause that can say some certified, then I'm not sure sellers, I'm not sure what they call them, but of particular pets that can, or dog breeders that can be, they need to some site, some type of certification, some type of something, license, I'm not sure, can you add that to order for it to not have whoever breed dogs? I'm just saying.
I mean, not having it, not having even the sample in front of me, it's hard for me to say, you know, that could be in there, I don't know.
I mean, maybe that's the whole thing that can kind of fix that issue with having whoever breed.
Maybe having. Yeah, and that's the kind of flexibility you would, you all would have to, to make those kind of determinations. Again, I don't, I don't have the sample with me, so I couldn't tell you if that was even mentioned. But certainly something we could look at when we, if you all want us to come back to you with language to actually push this forward or not, which is what we're, you know, what you all are determining right now, so.
Peter?
So I, I think all of us, all of us did a little research into this and I found a couple of cities that have, I think, really good templates. I think there are two reasons that there are people are going to different city councils and doing this. And one that, it's maybe the breeders that don't want members of the public that are purchasing the puppies to come onto their property, that are selling the puppies to the, to the pet stores is one concern is that, is that when people are welcoming the public onto their property and the people are observing the condition of the dogs and things like that, then the dogs are usually, are cared for than people that are selling to secondary parties that then sell to the public. So that was one concern that was articulated in the, in the materials that I saw. And then the second is that the more cities that pass this, the more it sends a signal to the legislators that there's like a statewide concern for this and for the regulations. And I think, so I think that the operations that people are most concerned about probably don't happen within cities. They probably happen in county areas and so the state is probably the best entity to regulate. But both California and Washington have ended this practice. And so I think that there is concern that it will become more prevalent in the state of Oregon if, if measures aren't taken. So that's, again, I spent a lot of time on this, but, but I found an ordinance that, that I thought was very well drafted. And that was the, that was also the further information that was kind of in their record for why they were, they were doing this.
Thank you, Peter. So for me, I, I do support some sort of ordinance like this. I wanted to make sure when I read through it that rescue animals were still available because I've worked with rescue organizations in the past. And I think that this is also an opportunity to work with the Oregon Humane Society and find out what are the, you know, what are the, what are their thoughts on this kind of law? Are they supportive of this? Because, you know, they're the ones in the trenches, you know, with cats and dogs that get surrendered and, or rescued. You know, there's thousands of, you know, you almost really don't need puppy mills. I mean, there's thousands of dogs being rescued all over the West Coast and Hawaii that just are, you know, need places to go. They're brought to different areas, so. You know, we, I think that we need to, I think this is a good opportunity for the city to have its voice in an issue that appears to be coming forward.
I agree with the mayor and the fact that the line about rescuing, you know, animals that are rescued, because sometimes a storefront in city limits provides more traffic, people might be in there for something. You know, maybe the humane society is there for the day with a couple of, you know, some, some animals that just really haven't had a decent look at them. And it provides a space for the public to maybe be more open to adopting a pet or intrigued by it. And so I'm definitely in favor of seeing a draft ordinance. You know, I, I don't, I don't condone the behavior of, you know, people doing kind of like a mass breeding and then trying to get them to be sold at our pet store, but the idea of rescues there doesn't bother.
Yeah, so it's, and it's in section two, it just says, nothing in this section shall prohibit pet stores from collaborating with animal care facilities or animal rescue organizations to offer space for entities, showcase adoptable animals, so. You know, adopting an animal still a bucks, a couple hundred bucks depending on where it's coming, so. Councillor?
Yeah, so with this, I had thought if there was any way to craft language, kind of what councillor Santiago was suggesting too. But the more I thought through it, it just really didn't make any sense about, because I don't, I don't know of any, you know, licensing or anything that's consistent across different states too. I mean, they're just a whole can of worms, it seems like it would be open with that. Or, you know, putting conditions on it like the seller or the breeder has, you know, X, Y, and Z. I, I don't know how you would accomplish that. So I think it's kind of like all or nothing on banning the sale of puppies and kittens. But I fully support the pet stores collaborating with shelters to try to adopt dogs and cats out that don't have homes. That, that, yeah, that's a very important activity.
Yeah, and it's in, the, the model ordinance that was provided has it in there. Mr. Rains?
City manager Rains, I, I too would second, I would love to hear what the Oregon Humane Society feels around this particular subject. And I think that that would definitely persuade me in understanding their organizational view.
And if I, JJ is really close friends with some of the top people at Oregon Humane Society. As you know, she does a horse rescue up at her land up Scapoose Road and Highway. So she's well connected with with these and probably would love to hear that we're doing this type of ordinance because I think her neighbor had a puppy mill before it got shut down by the county.
Need a motion?
You can just, I, I think we've heard that a majority of you would like to at least see an ordinance. I, I would rather not use the one that we were provided as a template. I think that, I think that was drafted for another state.
The, the only thing I want in there is something about the adoptable places and the rescues, the animal rescue organization being able to.
I got a, I got a new template.
Okay.
And that was really my only point, that section, that part of that section.
So how, how would we capture that, Peter, that still allowing the pet stores to collaborate with shelters for adoption activities?
We would just do a carve out that says exactly like that. This does not prohibit a pet store from collaborating with a not-for-profit organ, animal welfare organization to adopt out rescue animals. So, I mean, that's the kind of language we could put in there that would meet that goal while preventing. Because what they're trying to prevent is like, you know, six puppies from six, you know, golden retriever puppies or it, that aren't, that aren't AKC registered breeders, you know, aren't. It may not be humanely treated prior to arriving at the pet store.
Yeah. My uncle's a veterinarian and when we were in Montana, I had asked him about this and he said, he specifically commented on the number of puppies that he sees and just being able to identify where they're coming from and the bad conditions that they're basically originating in. And as a veterinarian, for decades, he's very supportive of this type of ordinance.
All right, thank you. All right, announcements. Half the council's a year older. Happy birthday Tyler, happy birthday Josh. Can't wish myself a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Happy, Mr. Mayor.
I can't get out of that one.
Oh, tried. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, October 3rd with the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 6:00 PM. Council at 7:00. Then October 17th, we have a work session at 6:00 PM and city council meeting at 7:00. September 22nd, we have a planning commission meeting at 7:00 PM. The last farmer's market is this Saturday, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. On the 27th, we have a 50-year stakeholders advisory committee meeting at 5:00 or 6:00 PM. And then our next economic development committee meeting is at noon on October 20th. Parks and Rec meeting is at 6:00 PM. On the 27th of October, a planning commission meeting at 7 o'clock. City manager Rains, you have anything?
I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the members of staff that showed up to the Adventure Fest. We had several members of the police department man the booth. We had both Huel and Isaac show up and help with the city side. We had volunteers show up and help with the 50-year plan project. And, and then also we had public works who did some cleanup for and afterwards. So again, I just wanted to thank staff for all their efforts on that. Thank you.
Councillor Miller?
Um, I'll keep this one short. I don't have that big of an update on the radio matter other than Mitch from the school district emailed this morning and he said that he was working with the tower, or been in communication with the tower companies to see what the rates would be for adding the receivers there. And then we are waiting for a quote from Communications Northwest to see what the cost would actually be. I, I may, depending on how that looks, come to council and see if we could perhaps use some ARPA money for that. I don't expect it to be a lot, but I just don't know for sure yet. And then as soon as we have that information from the tower company and the school district says they can handle that piece of it, I believe that city manager Rains is going to reach out to the 911 district and just confirm that they're willing to make the connection because it does require them to cooperate and make the connection to their system. And one way or another, I will find funding for this to get it done. But the ARPA request might be, I need to talk to the city attorney to make sure that, you know, it's a qualifying thing. But if it is, I'll bring it to council and we'll see how the cookie crumbles on that. As far as the new radio system engineering, we're continuing to get the interviews done with all the different agencies. Some of them are being a little bit more difficult to track down. Hopefully with the end of summer, that will be a little bit easier, but we are making progress on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor President Gryson?
Run with Neil was a very successful event and fundraiser and then that kicked off our Adventure Fest, which I know it took a lot of funding on our part that maybe wasn't met with an equal amount of sponsorships. And I know that we want to continue this event long-term and we'll probably have to make some tough decisions going forward if financially this is something that we can put on. I saw a stress lifted off more from staff by using Treadway and, and just not having to rely so much on volunteer support and people running around. I felt like people could enjoy the event. I heard so many families giving thanks to the city that they could show up to an event and didn't really have to, they could, an experience could be had by their children that they didn't have to pay for. There was no money that they had to exchange, right? And as a parent, you have those conversations like, you can only do the bounce house once and the big slide once and, you know, but they were there for hours despite the smoke and the heat. And we just keep getting hit with those terrible weather days on our big annual events. But as a council, I'd really like us to see how we can make something like this continue. Had a blast very late that night with a bunch of friends, listening to the band and it was just great throughout the day for all ages. Undoubtedly, you've seen, you know, soccer Saturdays and Friday football days. And there's been a lot of fall sports in full swing right now. And the Scapoose School District Board of Directors voted, not unanimously, but a majority in favor to name the new turf field McNabb Field after the McNabb family. Homecoming game will be Friday, September 30th with kind of a big name dedication. Um, I have a lot of people reach out to me about traffic concerns or, you know, there's always speeding down the street or they fly through the stop sign. And I just always encourage citizens to continue to share that. But as a member of the traffic safety committee, there is an outlet as a citizen for you to go on the PD website and fill out a formal document that then comes to, we review all of these sort of, I don't want to call them complaints, but concerns that citizens send in and we review them every month at our meeting. And so I just encourage citizens to use that outlet because if data shows that this is an area of concern for a lot of people and we're seeing it on our end, then we can make some changes to provide a little more safety. I don't want to get too much into it, but it's election season, you're starting to see signs out and about. And I just encourage citizens to take the time to visit with candidates at the county and city level, get to know them and their story and take the time to read about them and get to know what they potentially could do to benefit our communities.
Thank you, councillor President. Mosowski?
Been a while, it seems. Adventure Fest, yes. Isaac, I want to call you out. Isaac, you've put in a lot of time, effort, energy, and I can't say thank you enough for that because we did have an event, we, we provided what we wanted to for the community. Now, are there always opportunities for improvement? Absolutely. But I know that your, your work towards that and the staff and also our Treadwell, Treadway? Thank you. Put in a lot of time and effort and we truly appreciated it. It was great. As councillor Gryson had indicated, it is an event that our community members, all community members can come, partake in and have something with our community. I also appreciate, I think it was 12:02 when the music stopped. Why, maybe my clock was a little fast, so I appreciated that that, that was enforced or that it was recognized and that was a great, great opportunity. School, all right, we got students back in school. Seeing more and more folks out and about and walking. So when we talk about traffic safety, you know, one, I appreciate seeing so much more sidewalks in our community that we can have our people of all ages out, off of the streets and having a safe route to wherever their destination may be. Stated earlier, I was able to attend the farmer's market. I just want to remind everyone that the farmer's market is going to be continuing until October 1st is the last farmer's market of the season. Bill has done a phenomenal job and all of the volunteers, they're always seeking new volunteers. So if you want to get more engaged in the community, the farmer's market is a great entry point for those that are interested. Lastly, I've had an opportunity over the weekend, I actually met with around 10 local small business owners just to get an understanding of what their thoughts are around the, the climate of how the city is moving forward, to better understand their needs as this, as the city continues to grow in both size and spirit. I was very, very happy to be able to hear from them. Not a lot of complaints, but they were very happy with is the way that the city is moving forward and it's building up their businesses, that they're seeing customers. And I attribute that to a lot of the work that we as elected representatives have done to move our economy forward, especially with mayor, your foresight with seeing OMC and being able to work with a variety of different agencies and other representatives to see that space over there starting to grow and how that the residual effect is that our businesses here locally are seeing positive impacts because of it. So it was great to be able to get out there, understand the needs and understand the, the ideas that the, the site, excuse me, the vision of how we are moving forward as a community and having that feedback from our small businesses. So with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Well, I'd like, well, a second, everything said about the Adventure Fest and Isaac, great job. It was, I know there was a lot of things to pull together and I guess it just went very well. I, I appreciate the visibility of our police department at the event and they, it's just really nice to see them engaged like they are. Last Saturday, we had our Out of Darkness Walk and the police department, our police department, Timmy Sue and Chaplins and Chief Lugall were part of that sponsorship. Went very, very well. It was well attended and I was, I mean, I've been to other ones before, but I think this is probably the best attendance that I've seen anyway. And they were visible and I had a lot of booths there, it was like a little fair, you know. So anyway, I was very impressed and, and it's something we want to keep going. It's a very, very important issue that we need to support anybody who's trying to, you know, help kids who are troubled.
I would like to third. Isaac, you, I saw you and the whole staff, it's a lot of work, believe me, I know we've been part of that before. So I, you guys did a great job from what I, I saw as an attendee. It went great. Sure, there was a lot of fires in the background, but that's okay. But thank you, thank you for your hard work. Little bit what councillor Gryson said about speeding, I would like to add, we do get a lot of, of comments from the, from the community. We should be slowing down, especially we're coming to the, to the city. As soon as we get to Scapoose, I know the highway, it's a little faster, but there, there are streets that, that people are trying to cross over Highway 30, so please slow down because there's sometime, there's no traffic, lights in some of those intersections and I know there's been some nasty crashes lately, so please slow down. Another thing is I, I do invite the community to come and share your comments. We get the, we get emails like, how can I, can I meet with you guys? Can we talk? I'm like, sure, come on down. Come on, online as well, you don't have to be here in public if you don't choose to. So we are open to your comments and your thoughts from the community. So please do invite you to come. And that's about it. Oh, I did do the run for Neil, it was awesome. We didn't get any smoke in the morning, so that was good for our lungs, but it was a great day.
Right, I'm going to start with Adventure Fest as well. It was a really good event. I think the financial concern, I think what this council should do is set the date right away. We've got the logo, I think the thing that dragged the fundraising effort was there's two things that happened. We didn't get the logo, got that together late, which delayed fundraising. And then I think there's a little bit of miscommunication of who the fundraising was doing, but some of us stepped in and did some fundraising at the last minute that worked out pretty decently. But I think, I think just that and the fact that if we have the date set now, we can get before some of these larger companies. And as they're setting their budgets in October, November, so if we get to them now with, hey, we're having this event, we can just give them the same stuff, just change it to 2023. And I think we can get some of these larger donors to put money in, but we have to, we have to do it sooner than waiting until the last minute. We got, I mean, I'm going to give the shout out to, you know, Cal Portland, who donated $3,500 to be the sponsor of the, the market area, which, and, you know, a shout out to Ty Miller's company, who was the sponsor to the mechanical bull. You know, I mean, but those were personal calls, you know, those were making phone calls to people that I knew, not going to people that I didn't know. You know, I mean, but those were personal calls, you know, those were making phone calls to people that I knew, not going to people that I didn't know. So it, I think that if we're going to really amp up to be able to raise that kind of money and make it where the city's not spending money on it, that we need to take the front end more serious and get that fundraising and information out there right away. And that's the biggest lesson I ever learned from even doing Wings and Wheels is that early information for people helps us raise money. And the money raised for sponsorships helps pay for the event. So it was a great event though. I mean, it was weird. It was cold in the morning, then humid in the afternoon. And, you know, we, I, I ran a booth for my business and it was, you know, exactly what I expected for what I do. You know, some interaction, I gave away a bunch of, you know, yeah, first aid kits and little gadgets from whatever insurance company had given to me over the years. It was a good time to empty the shelves. But it was a good event. Isaac did yeoman's work on it. Appreciated the fact that city staff was there all day representing the city. And it looked like it was well attended. I mean, you know, again, because of the size of the space, it looks like there's fewer people than there are. If it was condensed like into Heritage Park, like the old powwow days, it would have looked a lot more packed than what you saw, so.
I like space.
Yeah, but it's just the, just the aesthetics with someone says, well, there didn't seem, there's a lot of people there because they're walking up and down. I saw them, you know, walking around. So it was a really good event and I hope we go forward to it. It was nice having the Columbia County update. Those were, the commissioner and I actually worked together on sparking the tourism. And so it was, it's great to see it moving forward. Columbia Economic Team meeting we had last Tuesday, it was a really good meeting, some updates on projects. I, at some points I can, not really at liberty to talk about the details of the product, projects and that's economic development because the company that might be looking at a place doesn't want it all out there. And, but there's opportunities that are, I mean, that are going to be very exciting opportunities. And when you talk about OMC, it wasn't just the, it was the, and it wasn't really even, the 2010 urban growth boundary expansion started about, you know, the, there was a post acknowledgement that we were going to do back in 2002. And the airport, the original name of the airport, and I think it's still named that, is the Scappus Industrial Airport.
Airpark.
Airpark. And I remember having a conversation with Ted White before he passed away. Great person in the community that was a very, I remember him coming before the city council when we raised water rates in the early 2000s. He thanked us for the years of low-cost water, but understood that we had to upgrade the plants. But he said that they named it the Scappus Industrial Airpark because they wanted the word industrial in it to signify that we are open for business. And this was in the late 70s. So there's this been, this, it's, it's like the mid 60s city plan that had the Conley property as a park and now it's Veterans Park. We're really just stepping on, standing on other people's shoulders and pushing some of these concepts forward. And, you know, it takes a lot of work and takes a lot of, you know, we get to sit up here and hear both sides. And I always say that, you know, for everyone running for office, if you ever want to find out how bad of a person you are, run for office, someone will tell you. But you'll, you'll hear it and, you know, I mean, if you vote one way or bought off by that side, vote the other way, you're being bought off by that side. And what we're really trying to do is make the best decisions for our community. And recognizing that, that in order to have a vibrant, commercial downtown economy, we can't have 80% of the people driving out of town in the morning at 7:00 AM. They're not coming back till 6:00 PM. That does not bode well for anybody that runs a retail storefront property in the community because that's a lot of people that can't be their customers 7:00 AM, 6:00 PM. So if, the more people we get working here in town, the more people that will be able to shop during the lunchtimes and visit our stores. And I know that from when I worked out of town, I think anyone that's commuted out of town knows that sometimes you go during the lunch to pick things up and if you're not in town, you're doing it outside. You know, if you're going to do a happy hour, you're going to do it near where you work because it's convenient. And by the time you get back to Scappus, it's kind of already starting to break down and it's dinner time and whatnot. So the, the concept of making sure that we have an economy that's based here is so important. That's what that area is about. OMC is just kind of the lightning rod that's really drawing in a different type of tourism. It's really of an industrial tourism, manufacturing tourism. People that come in here to look and see what's going on, they come for that. So the future of, we're able to get a hotel, that hotel is going to be there so that people can stay in either PCC, OMC, or OMC R&amp;D. And it's, it's really, really great. It's, somebody sent me an article from at Oregon Life where we were written, listed as the eighth best place to live in Oregon. And I read through it and it must have been before PCC opened because they didn't say that there's a PCC there. So I didn't go back and check the date. I was kind of in a hurry that day. But I think everyone that works for the city and lives in the city should be proud that somebody recognized, and we are the smallest, every city above us was much larger than us by twice the size. We should all be very proud of the community that we've built and that people recognize this as the eighth best place to live in Oregon. That's, that's something to be proud of. And so with that, it's time to move on to the next item, executive session. The city of Scappus will now meet an executive session for the purposes of ORS 192.660. Executive session is be, is held, this way to ORS 192.660 parentheses two, parentheses I, employee evaluations, which allows the city to meet an executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we'll return to open session, welcome the audience back in the room.